Good afternoon, welcome to our Tuesday, June 26 meeting. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Lieberman.
Here.
Ms. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fuller.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeeming of justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation to begin our meeting with. This is a great story and Commissioners and Joe and some of the directors were able to have lunch with this group of people just recently. And I'm going to ask Joe Whitlock to come up and tell the story, Joe, about what happened a few months back.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd like to ask my coworkers and Rich actually to come up. The situation with... Come on, guys, don't be shy.
Come on, get back there, come on. We want you all. Kathy wants to take a picture, too, so...
Yeah, so as they come up, first of all, everybody in the room, how many are trained in AED CPR? Can I see you show hands? Okay, that's good. How many know where the AED is in the building if you had to? Okay, that's encouraging. This is Rich, coworkers here, go ahead. We had an incident at Spalding Road where Rich had a cardiac arrest incident because of the response of coworkers here. The AED, the AED CPR training we've had, Rich is here today, so... I know that for, if you're over the age of 40, that sudden cardiac arrest is the leading cause of fatalities if you're over 40. So as we have an aging workforce, people are working longer in the workforce, I want everyone to know where the AED is at, CPR training, make sure you get your training. But Rich, it's such a gift to have the gift of life to your coworker, know what to do and how to respond. And Rich is here today because of that training, because of the AED investment in those. And I'm glad to see Rich back at work.
Glad to be here.
We're very glad to be here.
Thank you.
Hey, Rich, can you just kind of share what happened that day for people?
Well, I was sitting there thinking about Doug Milton, who was one of our inspectors who died on the first, and his funeral was at night. And I'm thinking, well, do I go home, change, go to the viewing funeral? And then my niece had just graduated from nursing school, so I called my mom. She was going to be pinned on that Saturday, so Saturday night was going to be the graduation party at her dad's house, which I didn't know where he lived. So I called my mom, she didn't know the address. So I called my sister, she was giving me the address. And I leaned back, and I mean, it was the weirdest feeling, it just sped in, I was going that quick. I dropped the phone, my sister was going nuts because she knew something was wrong. That's it. And then I woke up on the floor looking at these guys. And I'm like, how did I get here?
See, it wasn't any one of us that did it, it was all of us doing a little piece. And luckily, we were there. Everyone knew what little piece they could do, and it ended up for the better.
So why don't you tell us about the AED and how simple it was to you? We should have brought that one that we had upstairs down. Oh, good, so everybody can see what it is. We have them throughout the county building and all of our properties, but you know, it's something that I think people can walk by and see it and not really think that that's something I need to know how to use.
Absolutely. So the magic box of the AED, it's this easy. Pull this cover, and you're going to have some pads in here, you open it up, and you have universal symbols on where to put those. You can hit the on button, and it will walk you through what to do. The pads instantly do EKG, they check for pulse, they check for heart rate, and if needed, the shock, it'll ask you to administer a shock. So it is really that easy to use, and we encourage everyone to know where they're at in the public buildings, county buildings, and don't be afraid to use them, don't be afraid to grab them.
Kathy wants to take a picture, she wants us to stand up to Joe. Stand up, too.
Don't put the pads on me.
We're not going to use those, yeah.
Trust me, they hurt when they came off.
So all of you guys, thank you for coming, and we're really happy to have you here. Okay, we'll start with County Engineer, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrators, ladies and gentlemen. We have two items today. The first is Resolution Number 18-901 to authorize a partial release of a sidewalk cash bond for lot 52 in the amount of $4,548.40 for the estates of Carrigan, Section 3, in Washington Township. And 902 is to extend the funding certificate with Cramar and Associates LLC for the Havermel Road Improvement Project Phase 1 in Jackson Township through December 31, 2018.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Prosecutor, Chief, would you like to do that?
Sure. 18-903 is to enter interim agreement with Robert T. Doug Levy Jr. and Doug Ann Spa, attorneys at law, and the law firm of Cass Satinius and Hollister LLC to act as special legal counsel to assist the prosecutor's office in providing legal counsel assistance to the Veterans Service Commission with respect to the negotiation and execution of a new contract with their bargaining unit employees at a cost not to exceed $42,000 through December 31, 2018.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Juvenile Court, Joe?
Under Juvenile Court, we have Resolution 904 to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 subsidy grant agreement approved by the Ohio Department of Youth Services to add competitive reclaimed Category 1 and 2 community-based services and Evening Reporting Center to program funding in the amount of $148,138 to the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 grant year plan.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Monday Community Correctional Institution?
Under Project Monday, we have Resolution 905, which authorizes an agreement with Smart Communication Holdings, Inc. to install and operate an inmate communication system and to provide inmate communications and maintenance services at no cost to the county or Monday for an initial three-year period.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the Clerk's Office, we have approval of the minutes of the meetings on June 19, 2018. Resolution 906, approval of bills. And 907, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services, Amy?
Resolution 908 is the approval of personnel actions, and that list is available in the Clerk's Office and was reviewed in this morning's executive session. Resolution 909 solicits proposals for a human services levy system infrastructure assessment for the Human Services Planning and Development Department. 910 solicits proposals for detention food and commissary services for the Sheriff's Office. 911 amends the price agreement with Aramart Correctional Services for detention food services for various community departments by amending Article 3 by extending the term through September 30, 2018. Resolution 912 authorizes the purchase through a state-run contract from Ohio Machinery Company of a Caterpillar M314F-wheeled hydraulic excavator.
For environmental services, an amount not to exceed $285,715. 913 authorizes the purchase from the Hock Company for a Water Information Management System, or WHMS, online for environmental services in an amount not to exceed $86,462.10. 914 authorizes the purchase through a National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance from Wyboll Energy Systems for the purchase of a video recorder and camera system for environmental services in an amount not to exceed $121,141. 915 exercises the second of five renewal options with the Society of St. Vincent de Paul District Council of Dayton, Ohio, for the leasing of 1,008 square feet of office space at 1133 South Edwin C. Moses Boulevard, Suite 284, through June 30, 2019, at a one-year rate of $13,245. And I have several price agreements for environmental services. Resolution 916 is with Prickle Brothers for brass parts through June 30, 2019, with an option to extend. 917 is with Ferguson Enterprises Doing Business as Ferguson Waterworks for pipe repair clamps through June 30, 2019, with an option to extend. 918 is also with Ferguson Enterprises Doing Business as Ferguson Waterworks for brass parts through June 30, 2019, with an option to extend. 919 is with Badger Meter for water meters and repair parts through June 30, 2020, with an option to extend. And Resolution 920 is with Neptune Equipment Company for water meters and repair parts through June 30, 2020, with an option to extend. And I have a late agenda item. Resolution 993 authorizes an agreement with ReliaStar Life Insurance Company for stop-loss insurance for the self-funded Montgomery County Health Plan Program through June 30, 2019, at an amount not to exceed $814,000.
Move for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services, Pat?
Thanks, Commissioners. First, we have Resolution 921, and that's to release 100% of the letter of credit and subdividers contract for the Bridle Creek Ranch Section 2 development, and that's in the amount of $39,415.48. And then we would also like to accept a couple of subdividers contracts. The first is 922 with York Commons Section 18 and 19 Development, and 923 with the Villages of Winding Creek Boulevard's Section 7 Development. And then we would also like to submit a couple of applications, and that's to participate in the Ohio Water Development Authority Local Government Agency Loan Program and authorize execution of cooperative agreements with the OWDA for construction of the projects, and those are Resolution 924 for the Seville and Templehurst Water Main Replacement for a loan in the amount of $160,560, and Resolution 925, the Winsler Park Phase 1 Water Main Replacement, and that's for a loan in the amount of $1,267,393.36.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jerry, you have a lot today.
I'm going to try and summarize.
Okay, you may try to summarize all of these.
Okay, so before you, we have Resolution 926 to accept a subsidy from the Ohio Department of Development of Disabilities in an amount of $45,000 for state fiscal year 2019 to provide outreach for early intervention services. 927 authorize a consulting agreement with Sinclair Community College to provide development and coordination of managed services for a cost not to exceed $200,000 through June 30, 2019. 928 authorize an agreement with Sinclair Community College for consulting services for the Fast Forward Center in an amount not to exceed $400,000 through June 30, 2019. 929 authorize a contract with United Way for the Children's Defense Fund Freedom School Program at a cost not to exceed $50,000 through June 30, 2019. And 930 amend an agreement with Goodwill Istrusil's Miami Valley for Miami Valley Works for eligible families by modifying the terms of the contract at no additional cost to the county through June 30, 2019. In addition, we have some homeless contracts. 931 authorizing a contract with the Miami Valley Housing Opportunities for supportive living assistance for tenant empowerment program in an amount not to exceed $68,382.16 through June 30, 2019. And 932 to extend the contract with the YWCA for the SRO Case Management Services in an amount not to exceed $27,700 through June 30, 2019. In addition, we have the Resolution 9... Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution 944 and 945 are also agreements to extend the term of the agreement through June 30, 2019. 945 adds an additional $94,015.50 for the Elizabeth New Life Center. The next are amendment contracts by adding funding lines through June 30, 2019, and the Resolutions 946 through 948. Amend the contracts by adding funding lines through June 30, 2020, and those are Resolutions 949 through Resolution 960. Also, we have Resolution 961, which authorizes the participation and acceptance of an incentive through Ohio's Title IV waiver demonstration project, Project Ohio, in the amount of $30,000. Resolution 962 authorizes an affiliation agreement with Walden University to aid the professional development of students in the Masters of Social Work Program by offering practical opportunities to exercise social work knowledge and training through practicum experience through August 26, 2019. 963 is authorizing Option 2 with Universal Transportation Systems, LLC, Doing Business as UTS, to provide non-emergency transportation, transport broker and transportation provider services for Medicaid-eligible residents at the proposed line item unit pricing through June 30, 2019, and updating several articles. In addition, authorizing contract agreements. 964 with Woodhaven Treatment Center to provide eligibility referral and support services with donated funding from Woodhaven Treatment Center in an actual amount of 50% of the expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31, 2018. 965 is ENA, Inc. for substitute care services through March 31, 2020. 966 is Sinclair Community College to provide support to the Fast Forward Center under the Out-of-School Youth Initiative for PRC-eligible families in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through June 30, 2019. 967 is the Greater Dayton Hospital Association for Early Intervention Services in an amount not to exceed $985,725.53 through June 30, 2019. 968 is the JLG Miami Valley Doing Business as Yes for Youth to provide comprehensive case management and employment program services, increasing the funding amount in Article 3 by $150,000 to a new amount not to exceed $325,000, and modifying Article 4 cost and delivery purchase services through December 31, 2018. 969 is Wright State University School of Professional Psychology, Ellis Human Development Institute for Clinical Services at the proposed line item unit pricing to update Article 4 cost of delivery and purchase services. 970 is Agape for Youth for Reunification Services to add 2018 funding in an amount of $135,000 for a total amount not to exceed $540,000 through December 31, 2018. And then we have a few amending contracts to extend the termination dates to December 31, 2018, and update several other articles. They are Resolutions 971 through 974. Under Frail Elderly, we have amend contracts by adding funding lines through June 30, 2019. Those are Resolutions 975 and 976. Also amend contracts by adding funding lines through June 30, 2020, Resolutions 977 through Resolution 982. That's what we have today.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, gosh.
It's why we say the county plays a big role in human services.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it's really broad.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Development Services, Michael?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Development Services, Workforce Development, we have Resolution 983 authorizing a contract with Miami Valley Career Technology Center, MVCTC, for basic skills computer lab services in an amount not to exceed $50,000 through June 30, 2019, with an option to renew.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Community Economic Development, Eric?
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution 984 issues a publish a notice of public hearing on housing and community development needs for the Montgomery County Fiscal Year 2018 Action Plan and to present the FY 2018 through 2020 Draft Consolidated Plan for Review and Comment prior to submission to HUD in discussion of previously funded CDBG projects. Resolution 985 accepts the recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Committee for proposed community development block grant project funding for fiscal year 2018. 986 approves an economic development government equity edge agreement with Harrison Township for the Buckeye Trailer Repair and Fabrication Project in an amount not to exceed $40,000 or 12.9% of the total project cost, whichever is less. Then we have authorizations of delegation of activities agreements. Resolution 987 is with County Corp. for the operation of various housing activities in an amount not to exceed $117,345 through December 31, 2019. 988 is with the City of Trotwood for the Wolf Creek Pike Resurfacing Project in an amount not to exceed $75,000 through January 15, 2019. Resolution 989 is with the Village of Verona for the North State Street Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed $106,000 through June 30, 2019. Then we will be amending some agreements, and this is with Resolution Project 990, and that's with County Corp. for the operation of home housing activities by extending the termination date of December 31, 2019. And finally, 991 is with County Corp. for the operation of home housing activities by extending the termination date to December 31, 2019.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And under the County Commission portion, we have a hearing, 18-992, and that is a proposed .25 increase to the Montgomery County sales tax. And I will now open the public hearing and turn it over to our Assistant County Prosecutor.
Joe, are you going to do your presentation first?
I will do a summarized version, yes, but I think we need...
Anyone wishing to speak on the matter today in the public hearing, if you could stand and raise your right hand. And then do you all solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And just to follow up on that, did all of you, I know most of you did, did all of you fill out the request to speak? Michael, we need you.
Back.
Okay, okay. They're in the back. Yeah, sure, thanks. Okay, he's going to do his.
Okay.
Joe's going to do this, and then we're cutting. Okay.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon, this public hearing really is the second of two public hearings that are required by the Ohio Revised Code, and is the culmination of over a year of very, very hard work, community input, and deliberations both with stakeholders in the community as well as the commission as we've moved forward to complete our, the development of our 2019 through 2023 five-year financial plan. The county has had a long history of multi-year financial planning that really goes all the way back to the first plan that was started in 1989, and this presentation and recommendations today continues that history and tradition of prudent and fiscally responsible multi-year financial planning. I do want to thank all of the members who participated in the five-year financial plan advisory committee, to myself and to you all as the Commissioners. I also want to thank the elected officials and agency heads who really worked with us on the cost-saving and efficiency that's included in this plan. And then last, I'd like to thank the entire administrative team, and most particularly Mr. Tim Nolan and the OMB staff, and all of the folks who work in the finance area, because they really have done an amazing job. Anytime we needed projections, changes, various scenarios, they always developed the information that we need to have, good deliberation, make good decisions, and end up with the recommendation that we have for you today. When you look at the Montgomery County General Fund for 2019, it's $154.7 million. That funds a variety of services that the county provides. Most of those are mandated, most of those are directly related to the fact that counties are really the entities that provide the services that are typically associated with things that flow out of the state of Ohio, both the administration as well as the legislature at the state. When you look at the breakdown, over 70, just over 70% of the general operating fund dollars, $109 million, is allocated to judicial and law enforcement. That is by far the largest expenditure and really encompasses the full range of the continuum of sanctions that we are mandated to provide as a county in Ohio. So it is everything from the sheriff and the jail to the courts, to the prosecutor's office, to the public defender, to the coroner's office, to the clerk of courts. All of those various functions are all inside that $109 million portion of the general fund, and really are mandated services that we need to provide and need to make sure that they work efficiently and effectively for the citizens. The second-largest piece, which is almost 20%, is general government, and that really encompasses the pieces of the county government that citizens touch on a daily basis, whether it is the treasurer's office and the activities that the treasurer's office undertakes, particularly collecting all of the taxes for all of the jurisdictions, whether they're school districts, park districts, libraries, et cetera, whether it's the auditor's office who makes sure that all the property records are accurate, that assessments are accurate, ensures that when you go to the gas pump and you pump $5 worth of gas, you actually get $5 worth of gas. There are many things that happen inside the auditor's office that ensure that transactions that we take for granted every day happen effectively and accurately. Likewise, you look at the recorder's office and all of the things that happen in terms of services to provide, all of the records recording and make sure we've got accurate records, provide services to veterans, et cetera. Then you look at the Board of Elections, which is also in this general government piece. We have one of the best boards of election in the state of Ohio or anywhere in the country. That is something that we take extremely seriously with regard to making sure that elections in Montgomery County happen fairly, effectively, and efficiently. So those are those general government functions. Social services, it's a very small amount at $6.3 million, less than 5%. That is the mandated share, that is the amount that we need to provide out of our general fund so that we can draw down the state and federal dollars that we utilize for many of our social service programs, child welfare programs, et cetera. Community development, this is one of the few areas where we have any discretionary spending inside the general operating fund. It's $5.2 million. It encompasses our economic development programs, our Edge program, our support for arts and culture. It also is the area where we provide dollars for our workforce development initiatives, both in terms of helping adult workers as well as providing dollars for our youth works program that really helps young people get job experience and see a future and understand what they might be interested in doing as they move into the workforce. Debt service, very, very small portion, $2.6 million, less than 2%. We make sure that we keep our debt load very, very low. There's a strong tradition in county government here in Montgomery County of limiting debt to the minimum amount and only utilizing it when it really makes sense in terms of the assets that we're financing. And then the last piece is environmental and public works, which is the smallest piece at $1 million. This includes some of the activities in the engineer's office in terms of plating and reviewing real estate descriptions and surveys, et cetera, as well as the work that we're required to do by the state of Ohio with regard to stormwater management. So that when you look at that $154.7 million that is our 2018 general fund budget, with the exception of the $5.2 in community development, the rest of those dollars are really mandated and required services that we need to fund, and we need to make sure that they're funded at a level that provides the services that the citizens in Montgomery County expect, and at the same time, provide those in an efficient and effective fashion. So why are we here today with a recommendation from me as the county administrator as a part of our five-year plan, looking at a quarter of a percent increase in the sales tax? We have seen a significant number of reductions in revenue and particularly shared revenue from the state. We've adjusted with those over time, but in the end, we are at a point where the most recent reduction, which is the largest we have ever seen, which is the $9 million annual loss that is an ongoing loss to the general operating fund from the elimination of the managed care sales tax, has really pushed us to a point where in order to maintain those services and invest in our community in a fashion that has been... those services and invest in our community in a fashion that has been very beneficial, we need to look at revenue and the quarter percent increase in the sales tax that's being proposed. With regard to efficiency, since 2008, we've cut $31.4 million out of the county budget. So post-recession, we are, even though we are in recovery and we have recovered from the recession, our budget has been cut by $31.4 million. That's almost 20%. We also went through a downsizing and rightsizing, and we reduced our staffing from 1,800 in round numbers to 1,300 in round numbers. We accomplished that over a couple of years, ending in 2013, and we've maintained that constant staffing level of 1,300, even though over the last five years, we've seen continued mandates from the state of Ohio for additional services and additional mandated responsibilities for counties without any dollars attached to carrying those mandates out. Overall, and when you look at this, I think what's important is while we've continued to see these reductions from the state in terms of shared revenues, and I don't think that's going to change, we also have been in a position where we have continued to operate the county's general fund on a sales tax of 1%. And we've been at that level for 29 years. So we have not made any changes to the portion of the sales tax that the county actually receives in almost 30 years. By comparison, the state of Ohio, unbeknownst to most folks, raised the sales tax as late as 2013 by a quarter percent. I don't think that the discussion was nearly as transparent as the discussion that we've been having over the last year here in Montgomery County. So what does that look like? One of the other things that we've really been surprised is that folks really don't necessarily understand the breakdown of sales tax and where the money goes. So that when you purchase something that is sales tax-eligible in Montgomery County, you pay a total of 7.25%. 5.75% of that goes to the state of Ohio. 1% of that, which has been at that same rate, as I said, since 1989, goes to Montgomery County, and a half a percent goes to the Regional Transit Authority. So that when you look at this in terms of large numbers, that 5.75% sales tax in 2017 yielded almost $473 million in revenue to the state of Ohio. By comparison, it yielded to Montgomery County $80 million. And of that $473 million that retail economic activity in Montgomery County yielded to the state of Ohio for their operations, the shared revenue back to Montgomery County through the local government fund was only $7.4 million. So as I said, though, we are really in a position where we are on our own, and we need to understand what we need to do in terms of the services we need to provide, the investments we need to make in our community, and then we've got to figure out how we fund those, because there's not going to be funding coming from the federal government or the state government in order to make this the community we all want to live in. How that breaks out in terms of $1,000, if you went out and bought one of those fancy curved-screen TVs for $1,000, the way the sales tax breaks out is the state of Ohio gets $57.50. By comparison, we get 10, and the Regional Transit Authority gets 5. So now comes to the recommendations. We are recommending a strategy to address the fundamental and structural deficit that the reductions in revenue from the state have caused through two strategies. The first is looking at how we can generate ongoing operating efficiencies across the five-year financial plan and working with all of the elected officials and agency heads to do that. And the second piece is then also looking at how we generate the revenue necessary to continue to invest in our community and make those strategic investments that have really helped this community bounce back and recover from the recession and actually have built back a stronger community with a more diverse economy, and have really yielded results to the point where last year, the number of new jobs created in the Dayton region was more than Cleveland, Columbus, or Cincinnati regions. First piece is the operating efficiencies. We worked with all of the various aspects, both county commission operations, the general government operations, and the criminal justice and judicial operations, and we were able to identify an additional $4.6 million in operating efficiencies, either through additional reductions in staffing and costs, or the opportunity to actually bring some revenues that are outside the general fund back into the general fund on an ongoing basis. Once again, I really want to make sure that I recognize and thank the elected officials and agency heads who really worked with us and have really been, you know, they get a little tired of Tim and I coming to them and saying, "Well, we need to cut the budget again." We've been in a budget-cutting mode for the last 10 years since the recession, but their collaboration and cooperation and willingness to really look at how we continue to drive efficiencies in the organization yielded that $4.6 million. The other side of it, then, is how do we generate the revenue necessary to not only offset that structural $9 million deficit, but also, over the five-year financial plan, have the dollars necessary to invest in this community to continue to drive the recovery and the growth of the community that we all want to live in? So where would we invest that $19 million? We would invest it across four areas, the first being the community, and that would be our discretionary programs like the Edge program, our arts and culture investments, our microenterprise grants for extremely small businesses that really don't have any other programmatic areas to go to get that first leg up that allows them to move out of the basement or out of the garage into a small storefront. And the last being our strategic community projects. All of these, without the increase in the sales tax, would all be cut off the top and completely eliminated out of the budget were we to be required to balance the budget without additional revenue. The second piece is we would be investing in people. Two of these, the adult workforce and youth works I talked about previously, these are critical in terms of how we prepare young people as well as adults who are in transition so that they can get the jobs that are the good-paying jobs, that are the jobs that are being created now as opposed to legacy jobs that are no longer in this community and will never be in this community again. The third piece of the puzzle is preschool promise. This is a strategic initiative that came out of the Commissioners' MCO Future Dialogues with the community. We are looking at providing some ongoing funding, not nearly enough to have universal preschool across the entire county, but enough for us to get, move to the next phase in that process and really be able to move preschool promise to other communities that have significant need and significant economic barriers, and we're really pleased about that. Third piece is criminal justice. We have significant needs in criminal justice. Alternatives to incarceration, we have a situation where in Columbus, there continues to be a desire and a drive to reduce the cost that the state spends on incarceration, and that just tends to find its way downhill to county governments. The most recent piece is the decision of the state of Ohio to adopt a program called TCAP, which in summary, puts counties in a situation like Montgomery where if you have a felony five who's been convicted, unless they've been convicted of a violent F5 felony, we cannot, the judges do not have the option to sentence them to the state prison system. We have to keep them here locally. We cannot just take these folks and stack them up in the jail. We need to have alternatives to incarceration. We currently have some really good programs, but quite frankly, we probably need to double the size of those programs when you look at the numbers. Bail reform is another area where there's legislation currently working its way through Columbus, where we're looking at bail reform, looking at how do we assess individuals to ensure that the right folks are in jail and the folks who don't need to be in jail are not there. That's going to take time. It's going to take additional staff. It's going to take tools in order to do that. And while bail reform is coming down, there's not any resources attached with that to implement it, so we will be on our own on that piece. Security. Security is a significant concern for our entire criminal justice complex of facilities. Unfortunately, we live in a day and age and an environment where the level of respect for the law and the judiciary is in a different place than it was even five years ago, and the level of threats and the things that we see now with regard to all of the various aspects of the criminal justice system, whether it's judges, prosecutors, public defenders, et cetera, really merit and require us to take a serious look at security and ensure that we're doing the things to make sure that all of the courts' facilities and the individuals, both who are there utilizing the courts as well as the judges and all of the staff, are in a secure environment, and we eliminate the risk and threat. Last piece is the county jail. The county jail, even the new portion of the county jail is 26 years old. We have significant improvements that we need to make to the county jail, as well as we need to look at staffing. As we reduce staffing in order to stay at that 1,300 level, I think that, you know, when you look at those staffing levels, we certainly need to be cognizant of that and look at how we might add some staffing back into the jail, as well as have additional staff for the security aspects of the court's complex. And then the last pieces are building infrastructure. When things get tough and revenues get tight, the first thing that tends to go is any depreciation or investment in the facilities of the county. We have significant facilities. They're essential for us to provide the services to the citizens, whether it's this building, the courts building, our buildings for children's services, all of those, the Rybal Building, all of those are essential, as well as the capital equipment and rolling stock that we need in order to provide those services. So we've got a small investment in those, not nearly what you would typically see if you were having a true depreciation and improvements fund, but we believe the dollars that we're allocating will be adequate in order for us to achieve the goals of keeping our facilities and our equipment and all of our IT equipment in the working order that it needs to be in to provide the citizens with the services that are going to be there when they need them. What does that look like in terms of funding? Currently, in 2018, we're looking at $8.3 million across those programs. As we move into the next five-year financial plan, what we are proposing across those four areas of investment in community, investment in people, investment in criminal justice, and investment in the government infrastructure, is roughly about $18 million per year on average. When you reduce that amount by the operating efficiencies that we have programmed into that five-year plan, you end up with a net cost of approximately $13 to $14 million per year across the five-year plan. We have run projections beyond the five years, beyond 2023, and we are confident that, assuming that conditions at the national and state level are somewhat stable, that what we are proposing and the requests we've got in front of the Commissioners for the quarter percent sales tax increase will continue to fund both the operations and the investments beyond this five-year plan, and we believe it's got a longevity of at least 10 years or longer. And I think that our track record of stretching dollars as far as we possibly can would indicate that that will probably go beyond that 10-year time horizon. So with that, I turn it back over to you, Madam President, for any testimony.
All right. Well, we have several people signed up. As the prosecutor calls you forward, I know some of you did not get sworn, so Mary will have to swear you in as well.
The first person is... Mr. McGowan? Right here, and then just state your name for the record, please, and your address.
Perfect. I'm Scott McGowan, 3931 South Dixie Drive, Dayton, Ohio. So first of all, thanks for, thanks for everything that you do. One of the things that's really important to me is I went to kindergarten in Myhmsburg, I went to grade school in West Carrollton, and I went to Centerville High School. And this community has given me and my family and our workforce a ton. And I have a personal belief, and maybe you can call me a Pollyanna, I believe in this community. One of the things I'm really grateful for is the fact that the county was sensitive in regards to this decision, and they asked for input from the business community. And I think the perception, at least from our world, when we think of increases and impact in regards to, you know, finding dollars, quite frankly, from our perspective, from the private sector, would be easy, and we could help the public sector find this. And that was, that was a misguided assumption, based on, I think, the political landscape that we're faced with, and also the economic consequences that I think this community has dealt with for well over a decade. Losing well over 30,000 manufacturing jobs, losing our anchor tenant employers, and those of us that are left as employers, I think, I think we've done a great job, and I think we've proved that we're resilient and we can withstand a lot. Thinking about the $9 million deficit, from my perspective, you know, what is important to me, and I think our family and our workforce, is culture and arts is important. I think undoubtedly, economic development is essential to our community. We just recently heard the loss of another employer. It's important that we invest back and create more jobs for our community. And last time I checked, I think all of us want a safe place to live, so a place where police and protection is available. And thinking about that, it gave me a greater understanding in regards to economic consequences that, and the decisions that you make every single day, and so I'm grateful for those decisions, and I'm sensitive to those as well. It's easy for some of us to respond to these issues. I think what I've learned through, through you is by golly, if you spend a lot of time understanding them, you can make, you can make much better decisions. So I am a big proponent of supporting this, and not only personally, because maybe people could look at me and say, "Well, of course you are. You can afford it." I think my decision in saying this is not based on Scott McGowan. I think, we're a small company. We have 250 employees in Montgomery County, and I like to count belly buttons, so we've got moms and kids, so maybe 500 belly buttons are in and around. My family lives, my daughter Courtney and Jack, and having access to culture and arts is important. Having access to business development for our community is really important. And then having a safe place to live is really important. So thanks for letting me share, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Nick Jorgen, or Jorgen? Just as a reminder, anyone who is speaking there, five minutes. Inserted, I mess up your last name?
Oh, you're fine. Everybody does anyway, so it's no big deal.
How do you pronounce it?
Jorgen.
If you could just state your name and your address, please.
I'm Nick Jorgen. Address is 2847 Hayes Avenue in Dayton. I'm here for preschool promise. I think it's a great thing, you know, especially with the, you know, with the children and everything else, it's a big help to these kids. My child's been doing it for two years. I mean, the teachers and everything have been a great help to him. You know, with him getting ready to go to Holy Angels next year, he has, he is very advanced in what he knows, so it's been, it's been great knowing that he's in the top 10 percentile of who's going into Holy Angels. So I just, I think preschool promise, you know, I... So I just, I think preschool promise, you know, I, if we get the increase, I mean, I'm highly for it, along with everything else that Mr. McGowan, Mr. McGowan was talking about. But I mean, that's really all I have to say, you know, I mean, these teachers mean a lot when it comes to the education of the small children, you know, math, science, arts, everything, it's really, really helpful, helpful to these kids. So the funding that helps these kids get, you know, be able to get to this level going into kindergarten, I, I just think it's a great thing. It's, it's an excellent program, especially it helps, helps the parents financially, you know, where they might need it. So that's about all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Paul Helfrich?
Hello, I'm Paul Helfrich, 126 North Main Street in Dayton, and I'm here representing the Dayton Performing Arts Alliance. And I want to thank the commissioners and the county administrator for the vision they've shown through their past, present, and future support of the arts in Montgomery County. I firmly believe that the rich cultural life that we enjoy here in Montgomery County is how our region stands out from other counties, not only in Ohio, but throughout the Midwest and indeed around the country. If you were to look at a city like Dayton on a generic basis and its surrounding environment, you would not expect to find within it a collecting art museum, one of the finest contemporary dance companies in the world, touring performances by major Broadway shows, and our own ballet company, opera company, and Philharmonic Orchestra. These are wonderful assets, and I believe they are key to attracting the workers, the businesses, and the entrepreneurs of tomorrow that are needed for this, this county and our community to thrive. And the arts play a big role in that. We have a complicated ecosystem that supports us, and a lot of the funding, most of the funding, comes from private individuals. But a key role is played by government funding, and the support from Montgomery County has made a tremendous difference, and I believe it will continue to make a difference in the future, and I salute you for that. As a taxpayer, as a citizen, I am firmly in support of this proposal, not only for what it does for the arts, but for those other vital community services that will be supported. So I thank you for the vision and the courage you've shown in bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Carl Keith, 221 Waterbleed Avenue, Dayton, Ohio. Commissioners, Mr. Administrator, happy to be here today, and, and as the county's chief fiscal officer, I am here to speak in support of the county administrator's recommendation in regarding the county's portion of the state's sales tax. And I like to look at these in historical perspectives, okay? In 1934, the state of Ohio instituted a 3% sales tax and agreed to share a portion of the proceeds from that tax with counties and other local governments through the local government fund. Sharing this resource helped cover some of the costs of providing vital public services at the local level. This partnership between state and local government existed in more or less the same fashion for the next 70-plus years. Starting in mid-2000s, about 15 years ago, the state began taking steps to shift more and more of the cost of government to local communities and local property owners. These steps included eliminating both the personal property tax and the estate tax, repealing the 10% real estate tax rollback for commercial property owners, and slashing the local government fund in half. Cuts to the local government fund alone have resulted in the loss of more than $7 million annually to Montgomery County's general fund, for a total loss since 2012 of about $46 million. Despite this dramatic loss of revenue, Montgomery County has held the line. We have been fiscally responsible and have remained in a healthy financial position. We have maintained a strong credit rating. We have not experienced an operating deficit and have, and we have kept our debt service requirements low, as the administrator mentioned. We have done this by taking steps that have been strategic and carefully planned. We have rightsized our organization across county government, cutting more than 500 budgeted positions from the general fund. The auditor's office has seen a reduction in staff of more than 20%. However, we now face a loss of an additional $9 million a year. This loss threatens the county's future financial health and its ability to deliver the kinds of services this community deserves and respects. Elected officials in various agencies have worked with the county administrator and staff from the Office of Management and Budget to review our operations and identify ways to reduce costs, enhance other revenue sources, and create additional efficiencies to deal with this $9 million additional loss. I was happy to help coordinate this review among the general government offices, and as Mr. Tuss had mentioned, we successfully identified about $600,000 in, in additional annual savings. But that is not enough, and any further cuts which will result in the elimination of core services, and it will mean the loss of our ability to invest in our community and in our capital infrastructure. In my mind, the dilemma we face is similar to this. No matter what you do to increase the fuel efficiency of an automobile, when the tank is empty, the car will stop running. One area of concern is our ability to maintain our technology infrastructure that has become so important to everything we do. Just in the last three years, the number of online records managed by Montgomery County has grown from 1.7 billion to 2.4 billion online records, and the cost to maintain this infrastructure have doubled in the last 20 years to more than $2.4 million, and expected to exceed $3 million annually in the next five years. As we look to implement a new state-of-the-art county-wide financial system, as well as other projects, and when we consider our reliance on technology to deliver the services to our, to our residents, it is essential that we have the resources to maintain this infrastructure going forward. Local communities can no longer count on the state to provide the resources needed to provide their residents with local services. The county must shore up its own house. I urge you to support the county administrator's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you.
And next to speak is Lucky New.
Hello. I'm Lucky New, 100 Bonner Street, and I'm here to speak on behalf of David Azroni. David had to be in court today, or he'd be here to read this. So since last week, the Supreme Court issued a ruling forcing all online retailers to collect sales tax regardless of if they have physical presence in the state. This should increase sales tax revenue and should be considered before we add a regressive tax increase on everyone in Montgomery, Montgomery County, sorry. But again, instead of a tax increase, we've been doing research and posting information on reconstructingdayton.org on how to save tax dollars. The six municipal court systems in Montgomery County have each spent at least $150,000 setting up their own online clerk systems for managing their cases. Some spend another $30,000 a year for the software license around $100,000 a month, oh, sorry, $100 a month to post, sorry about that. Not one of them allows online filing. We have a county clerk of courts for common, for a commonplace, and it allows online filing. We have not received its cost structure yet, but it could be a one-stop site for all. Looking at Franklin County, a county that's been growing and successfully, they have a one municipal court system and one clerk of court site for the whole county. Let's fix that first. Excuse me. I don't usually...
You're fine.
If these municipalities think that they should have their own courts, maybe we should also force them to have their own jails, their own corners, their own economic development directors, oh wait, all of them have those too. We don't need an economic development director on every corner, and we don't need, and we don't need to also have the Dayton Development Coalition too. If we're going to have economic development people in each city, yeah. Your beloved ED slash GE program is nothing but corporate welfare. Before you tax the working poor, let's stop supporting companies like General Electric on taxpayer backs. You want to grow business in Montgomery County, stop making small businesses have to deal with 28 different income tax jurisdictions. You want to save money, stop having a city manager for 6,000 people. All of us have had to tighten our belts, maybe it's time you tighten yours. Each of you has had an assistant that makes as much or more than you do. Cut there and manage your own schedules, or ask the neighboring counties like Warren to have, pay for Sinclair like we do, since they have a branch campus. There are always ways to cut costs, deliver services better, and eliminate duplication of services. Taxpayers can't afford to keep bailing bad organizational management of local government out of a hole they keep digging. We're working on letting the citizens of Montgomery County know how much each of their banana republics and their illustrious leaders cost them. Please visit reconstructingdayton.org to learn more and to help out. Increasing taxes isn't the only answer.
Thank you. And I think you should, David, you deserve a raise after that.
Next signed up is Mr. Harvey Tuck.
Name is Harvey Tuck, 3018 Winter Haven Ave., Dayton, retired from IBM. It's been stated that the increase in the rate will result in approximately $19 million extra for the county. I assume that this has been based upon the fact of using the total sales for the preceding year and applying the new rate. However, consumers are affected by a rate. In the extreme, we have the case of over 20 years ago, when Montgomery County citizens purchased over the internet from Amazon and therefore paid no tax. We have three or four counties adjacent to Montgomery County that have approximately the same rate, and three or four that have a lower rate. After this rate is applied, we'll have the highest rate. When one listens on TV and the auto dealer announces, "We have the lowest cost," I wouldn't be surprised if they'll now say, "We, we have the lowest cost and the lowest sales tax rate." And automobile sales have a significant effect on the amount collected on the taxes. Then we have those people who live near one county or another, and when they purchase large items for the home, like appliances, they may be affected. And of course, there's the negative aspect, if too many should buy outside of the county, the employers would need fewer employees. What I'm basically saying is, it is really not possible to determine the effect of this quarter percent, and therefore, I suggest that the county commissioners be willing to consider revoking if, in the next year or two, the amount collected is nowhere near what we anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, will you, it's come up now twice, will you address the internet sales issue?
Sure. We actually, as a part of our five-year financial plan, have done two things. One is, working with the state of Ohio Department of Taxation, we have an estimate from the state of Ohio with regard to internet sales tax. And there's a couple of interesting things about internet sales tax that typically don't end up in the conversation. The first is that over 40% of internet sales that occur currently are already taxed, and we receive the sales tax on those purchases. So if you purchase from Amazon, you purchase from Walmart, Target, any of the large companies, we already get that sales tax, and that is already in the numbers that we receive right now in 2018. In addition to that, when you look at the untaxed portion, and you look at the state of Ohio's estimates, the amount that we will yield in potential additional sales tax revenue is only $2 million per year. So it is not some sort of windfall, it is a relatively small amount when you look at that retail sales. Having gotten those estimates and working with Tim Nolan in our OMB department, we actually plugged those, that $2 million into our plan, because we anticipated we might see that at some point. We plugged it in, in the last year of that five-year financial plan. If we are lucky enough to see it a year or two sooner, that would be, that would be really good, but that really doesn't impact much in terms of the fact that we've got $154.7 million general fund in 2018, and the, the costs associated with carrying out the functions of government versus the growth in revenue, expenditures always seem to grow at a faster rate than revenue. I think the last piece that's important about this is that the internet sales tax, if you look at the Supreme Court ruling, the Supreme Court ruled on the specific issues with a company called Wayfair and the laws in the state of South Dakota. There's a statement that was actually put out by the Ohio Department of Taxation, and I'll read it into the record because I think it's very instructive. This is from Gary Gudmundson, who's the Communications Director for the Ohio Department of Taxation. This is in quotes, "Today's decision does not have an immediate direct impact on Ohio. The court ruled on the laws in another state, not on Ohio's tax laws. We anticipate that we'll see some out-of-state retailers begin to voluntarily charge and collect Ohio's sales tax, but otherwise, the sales tax rules and laws in Ohio will stay the same until the General Assembly decides whether or not to change them." So that until the General Assembly takes some action, we really will not see any change in that. And at this point, there is no way to determine if and when that action will actually be taken by the General Assembly.
Thank you. One other thing I want to clarify, because it's come up a few times. In Ohio, when you purchase a vehicle, the sales tax that's charged, whether you purchase it in Cuyahoga County, Franklin County, or Montgomery County, the sales tax is charged of your home county. So that's been in law for quite a while now.
Yes.
So on vehicles, that is not an issue. Because I remember when I first, when we were first buying vehicles, maybe for the sheriff, I was like, "Wait a minute," you know, it, it makes sense that it follows your home Okay.
Next is Ms. Jenny Rohr.
Good afternoon. I'm the one, Ms. Jenny Rohr. I reside at 9350 Patriot Woods Court, and I am here representing the Frank M. Tate Foundation. Want to thank the commissioners and the administrator for the ongoing support of early learning in Montgomery County. The foundation has supported education and cultural arts exclusively in Montgomery County for over 60 years, and most recently has focused on improving new ways to improve early learning and kindergarten readiness in Montgomery County. According to renowned economist, economist Professor Heckman, investing in early childhood education is a cost-effective strategy that will result in economic savings. Data shows that one of the most effective strategies for economic growth is investing in the developmental growth of at-risk young children. Short-term costs are more than offset by the immediate and long-term benefits through the reduction in the need for special education or remediation, better health outcomes, reduced need for social services, lower criminal justice costs, and increased self-sufficiency and productivity among families. We applaud the foresight of the proposed tax increase to invest in our children, our community, and our workforce so that Montgomery County will continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for what you do at the foundation.
Next is Michael Rediger.
Michael Rediger, 258 Tamarack Lane. I'm a nearly lifelong resident of Montgomery County and the director and CEO of the Dayton Art Institute. Art Institute. I want to also thank the commissioners and the county for their support in valuing arts and culture in our community and what that means to our community. I echo what my colleague Paul Helfrich said is, "We're fortunate in Montgomery County and Dayton, Ohio, to have some of the finest arts in the nation." And certainly, our collection at the museum and the programs that we do in the building are part of that. Next year, we will celebrate 100 years of the Dayton Art Institute, right here in Montgomery County. And we have been tasked with caring for the community's art asset of nearly 27,000 objects and a building that is considered one of the finest museums and Renaissance examples of architecture in the nation. So it's with my full heart support that I thank you for your vision. I thank you for helping us to continue to thrive in this community. We don't have mountains and oceans, but boy, does Montgomery County and Dayton have an incredible arts community. And a lot of that is thanks to Montgomery County's support. So thank you. I fully support everything that you're trying to do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
And last to speak is Jeff Hoagland.
Jeff, I don't believe you were here when I swore everyone in. Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hoagland, 40 North Main Street, Dayton, Ohio, President and CEO, Dayton Development Coalition. Commissioners, Mr. Tuss, I know exactly what you're going through. When I was a former city manager up north, we had, this was after the '08, '09, '10, you know, all that was going on. But we had a decision to make about income tax increases, and we looked at cutting healthcare. We looked at the salary structures. We did everything we could to balance all that out, but we still had a shortage. And our council at the time made a, it was a difficult decision, but the right decision. And still being a Van Dalia resident, I look at all the positives that have happened since that increase. Flipping my hat to the economic development side of, you know, what I do for the region, now is a time to not step back, but to double down. We are, you know, really on the cusp, I think, of something great in this Dayton region. We are surpassing the numbers that are expected of a large, smaller, big community. We're not one of the three Cs. Montgomery County has been a leader in, you know, county government for decades for economic development as well. And as we move forward with, you know, with Wright-Patterson Air Force Base growing, with companies that are making decisions, and some choose to be here, some choose not to, but we have to have the resources available to allow them to help make the decisions to stay and grow with us in the Dayton community and in Montgomery County. So I think you all know this. I do fully support this, but I do understand the situation you're in. It's not easy, but I appreciate you going through the process, listening to everybody, both sides of it. And also, you know, as a resident and as a professional economic development person, I fully support your proposed increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
That was all we had signed up to speak.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I would just thank everybody that came today. It looks like it's, sounds like it's really storming out there.
Yeah.
You might want to stay a little longer.
Commissioner.
I just want to say, you know, it's been said a few times, but as Joe walked through and the county auditor kind of walked through the history of the state funding, that money just is not there anymore. And that coupled with the work that we've done over the last few years to cut positions and not hire those 500 positions back, cutting, you know, almost 20 percent, I think if we hadn't done that work, it would have been harder for me to support this increase. So we really tried to, I think, not only model the right behavior as a government, but it's been hard work. I mean, there were a few years, particularly, every time I look back at 2008, 2009, I just think, how did we get through those years? I mean, those were really difficult, difficult years. And for me, the loss of this managed care tax is really the tipping point. And I, you know, just speaking personally, my decision to support this did not come easily or automatically. I really tried to listen. I really tried to discern what the right decision is. And I think for me, you know, all the programs that people have talked about today, whether it's preschool promise, which is going to be the, you know, the pipeline of workers in the next 30, 40, 50 years, whether it's the arts community support, pretrial justice, which Joe touched on, but we have an opportunity in this community to really make some inroads in treating people better in the justice system, particularly those people who are nonviolent and those people who we can kind of make a contract with to make sure that they show up for court appearances and not have to be in the county jail. And then finally, the Edge projects that Jeff Hoagland talked about. So again, this decision for me didn't come easy or automatic, but I'm going to vote for it because I think that the investments that we're going to make, considering that this $9 million hole is structural. It's not just a one-year problem. It's year after year. I am, I'm going to vote for this, and I think it's the right thing to do to vote for it.
Judy.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this, I agree, this was a tough one. And I'll tell you, but I can't thank staff and our business people that stepped up to be on our financial plan and their comments, and they looked at everything. And, you know, we looked under every rock. We looked everywhere to try to get us through this. And this was tough. But what kind of community do we want to live in? You know, we don't want to go back 30 years. We want to move forward. We're on a good path right now. We want to stay on that path. So I'm going to vote for it, too. So thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
We talk a lot about investment, and it's investment in our community, it's investment in our employees, it's investment in our quality of life here in Montgomery County. And we can't continue to make those investments. I mean, it has become very clear that those things that we are known for around the state, whether it's Edge, whether it's the things, the extra things that we do for workforce development, preschool promise, we're always cutting edge and leading. And so those investments are so important. And we know that if this doesn't pass, we're going to have to cut out everything we give to the arts, not anything additional. Everything we give to the arts, everything we give to economic development, the money that we do for youth works and other workforce things that are not federal dollars, that we, as a community, invest in. And, you know, we haven't said a lot about this, but I got a question earlier from one of the TV and news people, you know, will we cut, will this affect the infrastructure? Well, when you're thinking, you know, some of the things like roads and sewer and water, those are funded by different funds. But Carl brought up, I mean, things that we don't even, I mean, we think about it, but I think, you know, the investment in IT, those kinds of investments, that is infrastructure. We won't have the extra dollars for that. I mean, we will go back, if you think about it, we'll go back almost 30 years, and we can't do that. And we can't ask the employees of Montgomery County to continue to, for us to balance the budget on their backs. The state has done that to us. They have balanced their budget for at least the last eight years, but going back even farther than that, as the county auditor mentioned, they've balanced their budgets on our backs, and we are their partner. And we can't do it anymore. We, three of us, including Joe, we don't like having to raise our sales tax, but we're not the only county in Ohio that's doing it. We're all having to do it. And that's what the state legislature and the governor's office said to us, "Well, those of you that can raise your sales tax, go right ahead and do it." So it's one of those, I don't think our citizens want us to go back to where we were and make the kind of cuts. It's job creation and working with our partners, like the Dayton Development Coalition. You know, we have to, it's a constant struggle to get companies anywhere in Ohio, but, you know, we're working against a lot of people that want to grow their workforce. And so for that and so many other reasons, I also will vote yes. And I also want to take a moment to really thank the citizens that came to our hearings, to our public information session, our elected officials. Carl, leading the general government work was not easy, I know. You know, and Judy and Dan were both, Judy was the county recorder, Dan was the county clerk before they became commissioners. I worked for Carl. And so we've been doing this a long time, and I don't think that we've ever been in, even the 2008, I don't think that we've ever been in such a position where our future really kind of hinges on this, right? I mean, we won't be cutting edge in things. And I think that, I appreciate the Five-Year Financial Planning Committee, several of them are here today, the voices from the arts community, we've seen some samplings, but I think we got about 100 letters from the arts community saying to us how important it is. And that's just a minimal part, but it means so much to them. And the arts are what really, arts and parks are what make our quality of life so great here, as was mentioned. We don't have mountains or oceans, but we have a lot of other things. And so I just want to say thank you also to our staff and Tim, who is retiring.
That's right.
And Joe, who is retiring, their last acts. But truly, I appreciate everything you guys did, because this wasn't easy. It wasn't easy. All of our elected officials, everybody came to the table, said, "This is what we cut. This is what we need. These are the unfunded mandates, and how can we move forward?" So thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to close the second public hearing on the levying of a quarter percent county sales and use tax for specific purposes to provide additional revenue for all the county's general fund for a continuing period of time commencing October 1st, 2018.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Yes, and commissioners, I have for your consideration Resolution 18-994.
And that is a motion to approve an adjustment to the sales tax rate from 1.0 to 1.25. And the motion is to authorize the levying of a 0.25 county sales and use tax pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Sections 5739.026 and 5741.023 for specific purposes to provide additional revenue for the county's general fund for a continuing period of time commencing on October 1st of 2018.
Second. I move for approval.
Okay.
Second. Third, fourth, whatever.
And all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Okay. Okay, that is it for the resolutions. I don't think we had any other citizens signed up to speak today. Any additional comments by the county administrator?
I think I've said quite enough.
Okay. What about you two commissioners, anything?
Other than Tim Nolan, Commissioner Lieberman talked about this, but Tim is leaving us after how many years, Tim?
About 30.
About 30. And he's been a great professional. It used to be that the county commissioners never had a budget office, and one of the professional changes in county government is when we had an official office of management and budget. And Tim has just been steadfast, and he's been with us through some difficult times and some good times. I sometimes asked him what it was like when we used to have money. I remember asking that, you know, like with investment income and that kind of thing. But you've been a great, you've had integrity, you listen to people, and you treat people with respect, and I don't think we could ask for any more. And so round of applause for Tim Nolan.
Thank you, Tim, for all your years of service. I'm going to miss you.
Tim, is this your official last meeting? This is it? Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's last day.
We're going to miss you.
I know. Okay, we don't have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, July 3rd, but our next commission meeting will be on Tuesday, July 10th of 2018, right here at 1:30.
Go for it, Jerry.
All those in favor? Aye. I think we were fine.